Good evening. We will call to order the meeting of the Edina Planning Commission for July 11th, 2012. Jackie, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Commissioner.
Here.
First item of business is approval of the agenda. You've received the agenda. Does anyone have any additions they wished or changes they wish to make to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Approval of the consent agenda, the first item is the minutes of the regular meeting of the commission for June 27th. You received those, I believe, in the mail. Does anyone have any corrections or comments to make on the minutes?
None.
Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the minutes.
Seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is community comment, and as there are no community here, we will move on to reports and recommendations. The first item, zoning ordinance update discussions. We have three ordinance issues to discuss. No particular requirement for action tonight, but we will be discussing these site grading subdivisions and building height. So the first one is site grading. Carrie?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Grabel, members of the commission. We've invited Wayne Hool, our city engineer, director of engineering, with us tonight to talk about site grading. We touched on it briefly at our last meeting. As you remember, we had the gentleman on Woodcrest who came before us a couple of meetings ago expressing some concerns. So we thought it would be a good idea to have Director Hool here and explain what we go through during the permitting process and give us a little background, and then we can just have some discussion.
I think I hit the right button. Doesn't look great right, though.
Did you drag it up?
Oh, there you go. Whoops.
Dragged the whole slide up?
I'm usually not technical. It's a challenge.
Looks like it's just below that blue bar. There you go.
Anyway, we can probably go off of this one here. Sorry. Anyway, Carrie asked me to put together what when engineering reviews the site plans, what do we look at? And we essentially, what happens is when a site, when a redevelopment occurs on a single-family lot is that it goes through the building department. They make the application for permit, and then it's routed around to the different departments, to planning, to the engineering department, and back to the building department. And what we do is we look at the site plan, and there's a number of different items that we look at from an engineering perspective of the site plan. One is that we look at the survey elements, and part of the building plan review process, they have a, and you can't see it on the side here, I just scanned it in and put it in, but that's basically all the survey requirements that are required on a new survey. Before, probably about 15-plus years ago or so, a survey basically was an outline of a house and the property lines. It didn't cover the topography of the lot, didn't cover some of the easements that should be shown on a lot, and some of the other elevations. Drainage, a lot of times they would just put an arrow where the drainage was supposed to go. And so, you know, 10, 15 years ago was really difficult to really verify that they had good surveys. But now, we have quite a bit of requirements, a lot of requirements on a survey, which brought up the price of a survey, but it's well worth the money spent for the applicants. The other item that we look at is drainage and erosion control on a site. We look at the surface water that's existing on the existing topography of the site, and then what the proposed grading plan would be. And what we look at is that we make sure that they don't redirect water, create a different swell onto their neighbor's property or adjoining properties. They can redirect it off onto the public right-of-way, but not on the adjoining properties. You can direct more water if it's going to that direction as it was before, because it's really tough to control what we consider more water, because if you have a big rainfall event, you can't control the water that's going in that same direction onto an adjoining property. So that's what, in my memo that took care of, that's what I referred to, is that it cannot be, that we maintain or reduce the same direction of flow. A lot of times what we'll do is we'll look at the property and say, is there other issues that might be pre-existing, like if they have downspouts that might be going onto adjoining property, is that we talk to the applicant and try to get them to redirect their downspouts, or if we have drain tile that was installed with the reconstruction project, is we let them know that that's out by the curb line and that they can take their downspouts and try to capture as much water that might go onto a neighbor's property and put it into the storm sewer system. What we're going to be looking at in the future from an engineering perspective is start looking at, how do we try to retain water on a site if it can retain water? And what I mean by that is if the soil conditions are correct. So a lot of folks are looking at rain gardens, but in a lot of the city, it's really difficult to install a rain garden because of the clay soils that we have in parts of the city. Other parts of the city, we have real good granular soils, so a rain garden would really be well adapted to put on onto that site where they actually could infiltrate the water itself. So we can see that coming up, especially with our new environmental coordinator or environmental engineer that we have on board that's working with the Energy Environmental Commission to look at that in the future. Yep, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. So you say you look at housing, not only just the drains, or excuse me, the grading, but also downspouts coming down? I'm just curious, because my neighbor's drains onto mine, and it's not that old of a house, so I was wondering what if, just from my own knowledge, I mean, what, do you typically look at all, do they have to show those on the plan to see where it's going and where they're flopping over, or how are you doing that?
Usually the downspouts don't come up till when it's under construction, and that's when the building apartments actually works with the homeowner on it. Those aren't shown right now. It's a good comment that maybe we should be having them show where the downspouts are going.
Yeah, because I mean, none of it, there's no surface to drain there, but their whole half of their house comes down in our little five- or 10-foot area, and that's right on our property.
Right, that's, yeah.
Or my property. And I'm sure there's other, especially on 50-foot lots, there's only so much room to go in those places, so they're, especially if they're building to the lot, or well, the five-foot line like most people do, any kind of grading or anything almost, I think in many cases, that's going to go onto the neighboring property.
And those are situations where if it's not shown on the grading plan as a swell, that they're really technically not allowed to put a new downspout and direct water onto the adjoining property.
Yeah, I think that's something that should probably be on your list, too, even though it's maybe preliminary, but it'd force them to think about it, because usually it seems it's an after-the-fact thing as well.
Right.
You know, well, that's the only place we can go. Well, you just did that because you couldn't, you never thought of it in advance.
Right, right.
Can I just piggyback on that? I just want to, because I think this is a big issue that we wrestle with all the time. So my understanding is to say that, first of all, you can't create new pathways for drainage that didn't exist before onto your neighboring property. You can create them onto the right-of-way, but you can't create a new pathway, a new drainage. I can't think of a word other than...
Direction of water, direction of water draining. That's correct, yeah.
So something that already existed, a natural drainage pathway that already existed can remain. And am I correct in understanding that you cannot have an increase in the rate of the runoff? Is that how it works? Is it the rate, or is it the total volume, or?
Well, we understand that you can have surface water drain in the same direction, and you actually can increase the rate, because it's really difficult to control the rate, not knowing how much rate you're going to be getting.
So if somebody comes in to, you know, if you've got two residential lots, and you've got a certain pathway where water drains from Lot A to Lot B, and Lot A tears down a small rambler and builds a huge house that goes all the way to the setbacks that has three times the roof volume that the old house had, chances are you're going to have a lot more water on Lot B, right?
That's right, yeah.
And there's nothing we can do about that?
To my knowledge, there isn't. And that is, that has, in my time at the city, that has been an issue.
Because you're getting more and more hardcover, and so there's more runner, more water running off of Lot A onto Lot B?
That's right, yeah.
Permeable surface goes away, or sharply reduced.
Let me build on that just one more step. Who gets notification of these rules? Is it the builder, the homeowner?
Of the rules, that's part of the application. So this policy here, which you can find on the city's website, that is actually part of the application for a building permit or grading, grading erosion control permit.
Is there a requirement?
So typically, it's the contractor that's doing the work. Sometime it's the homeowner that pulls the permit.
Is there a requirement to tell the neighbor about this, or let them know that, you know, you're potentially going to be impacted when this house is built and more is draining on your property, or, you know, how does that work? Is a builder just on their honor system, or how is the neighbors notified of this potential?
Right now, I don't believe there is a notification system that would notify the neighbor of the construction activities that would occur on a lot. I don't believe so.
Should there be in those situations where they're impacting the drainage?
Um, when you look at the lots in Edina, I'd say that's going to occur on every lot, on most lots. You know, 99% of the lots, because you're building bigger homes, maximizing out your setbacks and such, which is maximizing your hard surface. And in most cases, you have three adjoining neighbors or more around.
But again, they're making it somebody else's problem with that water. I mean, just in mind, it comes in and it drains towards my basement now. I mean, if I had to regrade, you know, I'm sure this happens a lot.
But if somebody's going to build a house next to my lot, I know they're going to build a house, shouldn't it be my responsibility to look into it and see? Why impose another requirement on a builder to notify everybody with it?
Well, they're impacted.
I'm going to build a house, and it might impact, what's he going to say? I'm going to build a house, and it might impact your lot.
Because they know where it's going to drain to, so they'll tell you it's going to drain more in your lot. Or they should be aware where that water's going to drain.
But I can come to the city, if you're next door to me, I can come to the city and look at the plans, can't I?
That's right, yeah.
I mean, you know, I understand what you're saying, but at some point, you've got to rely on people to take care of their own self.
I know that sometimes we require commercial projects to handle their stormwater on-site. Are there, do you know, the two of you, of any residential areas that have any similar requirements?
No, I don't, I don't, because both watershed districts permit for erosion control, but not for stormwater management, for single-family lots.
So if you're...
The watershed districts, we're in Minnehaw Creek Watershed District and also in Nine Mile, and Nine, actually, Minnehaw permits for the erosion control. They have to pull a grading permit basically from the watershed district, but they don't look at water management or surface water management for the site, similar to what they would look at for a commercial building site, where you have to retain so much of the first amount of any storm on-site.
And you're saying that other cities don't do that, too, or?
I don't know if other cities do it or not, but in the watershed districts that we belong to, they don't, they do not have a requirement for retaining water on-site like they do for commercial redevelopments.
Right, I know, but I'm wondering if, given what we're talking about, to what, how difficult would it be to impose some kind of requirement like that on the residential?
I think it'd be really, really difficult in certain parts of the city, where you, what would you do with that water to hold it on-site if you can't infiltrate it? I mean, we're encouraging rain barrels and those types of devices to reuse that water on-site, but that doesn't, I mean, that captures a lot of water, but not that much water. I think on the, this last rainfall, where it was like a .1 or something like that of an inch, tenth of an inch of rain, just on half my garage that I have my rain barrel on, it filled the rain barrel right up. So I mean, and that's like 50, 50 ounces. If you imagine a larger event, trying to hold, you know, what kind of a storage device would you have to hold that much water on-site?
But to look at it a different way, I mean, we're talking a little bit, we're looking at homes right now that are being built out to the boundaries, and it seems to me that at least we could preserve some of that permeable area by limiting some of that, too, couldn't we?
You could, absolutely, if you had to look at more of a lot coverage for single families or do something really to encourage, you know, pervious pavement or things like that, that you've already done on some of the driveway materials that you've changed in the zoning. So that's all going to help, and really encourage people to be more green on their sites.
Mr. Chair?
When we look at these survey elements for a typical review, proper lot survey, drawing scale, other required elevations, one of the things that we seem to hear about a lot, and I get phone calls, is the trend to put in retaining walls, boulders that elevate some or flatten some area of a yard or a lot, and changes that that has, both in the neighbor's view and perhaps in water drainage. Do you have those kinds of plans in the typical survey review? They're all there for you to look at?
We do. When we're, this is a tough one. Yeah, actually, this one didn't have a retaining wall, but this is a typical site survey that we look at, and part of it, if they do have a retaining wall, is that they would show the retaining wall and how the contours would come into that retaining wall. And so we'd look at the retaining wall to see if it would exceed a certain height amount, like 32 inches or so, that would then trigger to have it designed by a structural engineer. But we look at, like I say, what the existing contours would be on the site, and look at how the retaining wall fits in, and look at easements. We look at the sanitary sewer service into the site, especially on the tear-down rebuilds. The trend is to get a taller ceiling in your basement, which basically pushes your basement floor down, which then affects your sewer coming out of your home, because the main line is at a certain elevation, and if you drop that down, you might not have enough room to drop your floor down to have your basement drain out to the sanitary sewer. So those are the things that we look at from an engineering...
That's an interesting one. What do you do in those cases?
Well, we pointed out that you don't have the, you know, minimum grade to drop that down, and they have to circle back and either raise it up or...
And that's how we get the raising up and more of the retaining walls?
Well, can you repeat?
Well, indirectly, if they want that height of the ceiling, if they can still maintain the front doorway height and achieve it, that's why we're getting some houses moving up.
Exactly, yeah.
If I could add something here, I've been talking to a lot of builders in regard to another item on our agenda regarding the building height, where we were going to lower the ridge line. And in a lot of the discussions I've been having, they've been indicating that our current code requirement for side yard setback, where we measure height based on the average grade along the side yard, is driving the need for retaining walls to be built along the side lot lines. So they're building up the grade on the side, on the side yard in order to meet the height requirement for that side yard setback. So what I've handed out in front of you, it's this little amended ordinance, and this was suggested by a builder, that if we were to measure height in the side yard, the same as we do the front, where it's one established elevation at the front of the house, it would be, on that little graphic on the third page, I've indicated, kind of on the left-hand side, if we were to measure from that point, no retaining walls would be, this is an example of, there's retaining walls built essentially right up to that first floor elevation. If we measured the height there, the overall height of the structure wouldn't change, but they wouldn't have to build any retaining walls along that side lot line. Doesn't change the overall height of the house, but it greatly affects that side yard setback. And that proposed language on the front page would get us, would get us there.
So how do we measure height right now? Where's the starting point for measuring height?
We measure height, we measure it two different ways. In the front yard, when we're measuring the overall height of the structure, we're measuring it from the existing grade.
But I suppose you've got a changing topography. Is it the average existing grade?
Nope, yeah, yes, along the front lot.
Across the front or around the structure?
Across the front. Then we measure, when we do the side yard setback, we've got that regulation that says if the second story is taller than 15 feet, you need to step the setback in six inches for every foot above 15 feet. And so, and we measure that from the proposed grade. And so what we're seeing, in order to meet that 15 feet, they're building up the, basically, they're bringing in fill along the side lot line in order to meet that, to meet that requirement.
So what's happening on these lots that have a big drop-off? People are building houses, and they're trying to get the maximum, and that's that picture of that house we looked at last time with the big boulders along the side. They're trying to get as big a house on the lot as they can, so they extend it as far back on the lot as they possibly can. And so, what they're doing now is, in effect, building up their grade so they can have that height all the way back, and we're not counting the height of the retaining wall that they're building as part of the structure. And I don't know why we don't, why we give them that for free.
Another, another way to deal with this would not be this proposal, but simply say we're going to count retaining walls in the calculation.
Right. In other words, instead of measuring it from whatever grade they build to, you measure it from the existing grade at the time they start building.
Which will bring down what they can do in the front.
Well, it would limit how...
Unless you want lopsided floors.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I think you could force this issue to go the other direction, too, to bring it down.
Sure.
Based on how you phrase it.
Carrie, you said the front was based on existing grade.
Hmm?
So as the chair said, if we make that consistent on the sides, that would deal with this, right?
It might. That would be interesting. It might severely limit two stories to meeting that, meeting that 15 feet.
On a graded lot.
On a, right, yeah, on a sloping lot that grades down.
On a sloping lot, it wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
Because the other thing that happens when you do this, either, as pictured here, Carrie, where you don't have a retaining wall, but you have now this huge wall of house going up, that, you know, that's another kind of a visual impact. Either way, if you allow it to be measured the way we're measuring it, even if you, as long as you allow it to match the front, you've still created this gargantuan wall. I mean, it's possible to me that on a sloping lot, you wouldn't grant that same front height. Just a unique situation of a particular lot.
Why don't we, why don't we take that, run those scenarios for what if we did measure that side from existing grade rather than proposed, and figure out more definitively what that impact would be?
You know, and then if you, if you had a house, if you had a lot, such as the one we saw the picture of last time, where because of the grade on the lot, the only thing they could end up building was something with a four-foot ceiling in the front room, then they'd have to come before the group for a variance, and then we could consider it. And one of the factors is you've got a lot that's essentially unbuildable because of the grade, but then we've got an opportunity to opine on the whole thing, rather than the builder coming in, throwing up a huge retaining wall, and building a house that, I mean, that picture of that woman doing the gardening down there underneath those big rocks, it just, you know, it just doesn't seem right that that should have been.
I mean, there are ways, either with a, I know it's not involved now, but perhaps you don't need a roof that has the pitch that people are building right now. I mean, there are ways to deal with it, I think.
Carrie, if you're going to do some research, could you also check what a few adjacent suburbs are doing? That, you know, I know St. Louis Park and Minneapolis have narrower lots, or, you know, 50, 40, 50, 60-foot lots.
Yeah, I'm pretty confident in saying that the only city that has this similar setback where you have to step the house in is Bloomington, and they copied our ordinance. I think those other cities just have a straight five-foot setback. But we can double-check, see if anyone's made any changes here in the last few years.
Hey, Carrie?
When we talk about existing grade, what is that, what are we defining that to mean?
It would be the existing grade before the house was torn down. So if a house is going to be torn down, we require a survey, basically an as-built survey, that gives us what those elevations are, what the grades are, before the house is torn down.
So does that give them an opportunity to play with the grade before the tear-down and manufacture a different grade for purposes of qualifying for...
Well, we haven't run across that. No one has tried that as of yet.
No, but it sounds like they're doing other things, and so if we make, you create an obstacle here, then they, yeah. Figure out a way around it. Well, yeah.
Is there a permit process for retaining walls, and if so, how strict is it? Because that would be one way they could play with it ahead of time.
Apparently, it's not strict at all.
If the retaining wall is over four feet tall, it needs a building permit, because it needs to be structurally engineered, but that's about it, right.
You still have a grading permit. If they're moving, was it 10 cubic yards or more, on a site, you have to pull a grading permit. So if you're putting in a substantial retaining wall or trying to build it up, you still have to pull a grading permit, which would trigger it in the building department.
But if you had a narrow lot, and you're trying to put a retaining wall two feet from your house, you probably aren't moving that much soil necessarily either to raise it up three, four feet.
Possibly, but 10 cubic yards isn't much for its material to move around, you know.
I'm thinking a lot.
Carrie, so this is the one, if they can't get access to the backyard, but what you're saying, wouldn't they actually have needed a retaining wall all along here to get that full height then? I mean, I don't know the measurements, but it appears to me, from what you're saying, this needs to be retaining wall all the way back to get that full height. Is that not the case?
No, that, actually, yeah, that wasn't the case in that project. So that, the ordinance that's before you wouldn't impact that one on morning side. It looks, it looks to us as though they put that retaining wall in the front yard in order to have that flat front yard.
Flat front yard.
Essentially, and to try to save those trees, which are likely not going to last anyway.
Yeah, I mean, it's within two feet of that tree. A lot of branches, I'm sure, or roots got cut.
Well, is there no rule about maintaining access to the backyard? I thought there was, either pedestrian or for emergency access purposes, nothing?
No.
To fight that retaining wall issue?
There's not.
So the implication is that you trespass on your neighbor's, on your neighbor's to get to the backyard?
Yeah. They may have a foot on the other side of the house... Yeah. They may have a foot on the other side of the house. It's hard to determine exactly where that lot line is, but it, the retaining wall on the other side could be right on the lot line also.
They have worse retaining wall on the other side than even this one. There's no way on the other side they're getting down there either.
There's a picture on the next page there that shows the other one, but it's hard to.
I live down the street from this one, so I was looking around over there.
It's, it's pretty typical that I've seen in town where, where people, a lot of lots, especially on the smaller lots, where they, they do not, you could even be on a flat lot where I've seen people actually put fences up, where they literally have to go through their garage or through their home to get into their backyard.
But I mean, how does that work with, on somebody else's land to get through there? They were doing all this work back there, which maybe they let them, but to get a lawnmower back there, unless they're putting a lawnmower back there that stays back there or whatever, they're, they're, they're on somebody else's property.
Yeah, in that instance. In that instance, the neighbor did grant.
Well, construction.
Granted during construction.
I don't think they realized it was a permanent easement.
No, and I don't think that was their intent.
No.
But we've seen sheds be put in the backyard in instances like that, and they may have a lawnmower back there and a lawnmower in the front garage.
When you run the lawnmower through the living room, do you have to turn it off or?
Well, what's our, what's our minimum setback on the side yards?
Five feet.
And so you're saying when you use a retaining wall, like in that picture, you, you still have to have five feet?
No, the retaining wall is up against the line.
That's kind of the point here, is that the retaining wall can be on the line.
Right. So what happens is you've got the drop-off at the end of the retaining wall if you tried to use those, and the trees are in the way.
Yeah.
But in theory, that's the idea of the setback, is that gives you a way around, as well as separating the houses from one another.
That's part of it.
True.
And remind me what happens with egress windows?
Yeah, we talked about that.
We don't have an additional requirement if you have an egress window, right?
Right.
So the egress window well will be in the five feet, which will, I mean, you can't get your lawnmower over that either on a small lot situation.
That's what's next to me, if the egress window comes out.
Yeah.
Whatever.
I, I think that's something we have to deal with. I mean, if people want egress windows, if they want basements that they're going to sleep in.
I've got a lot of examples.
You have to adjust the side lot setback for them.
So you could have two eas, two egress windows that have.
No land in between.
Like a big trench for.
Right. And that makes no sense to me at all, none.
You know, during, when the applicant actually applies for a permit, when you talk about the adjoining properties, is that our building department actually requires them to put erosion control fence or a construction fence all the way around the lot on the property line. Because of the issues that we had with trespassing of people assuming that they could go, or contractors assuming they could go on the adjoining property. So they try to head it off right from the start by, by putting a fence right up on the property line. And so if the, if the fence is down, they drive over it, then the adjoining property owners know they're on their property and.
That's just for construction purposes, right?
For construction purposes, yeah.
Construction's all done, and then the problem comes back.
Yep, then they're on their own.
Now, the, sorry, let me make one more point if I could. I think that raises a good issue. If you have all your communications with the builder, we have no idea how much information is getting back to the homeowner. And they may, may want to do something about that if they were aware, but it's too late by the time the house is, is done and turned over. So if we're going to consider some changes, I think something we should consider is that sort of communication to make sure it's clear to the homeowner at plan review what, what the city's comments are.
And in some cases, you know, that's, that's a great idea. However, in some cases, they don't know who the homeowner is or the property owner. They're spec, spec homes.
But they won't know, somebody's going to buy it if they're going to Morningside.
Hopefully, they would know what the situation is that they're, again, I just met with the homeowner yesterday at that dent and wanted a whole bunch of things changed up, that kind of house that they just built.
How do they know? I mean, if the house is built and it's been posted and somebody's decided they want to buy it, where's the information going to come from at that point?
Well, now, the retaining walls can go right on the property line. There's an impact on the neighbors often when those are reconstructed as well. There was a situation on Bruce Avenue where the house came right up, you know, right down to the inch as far as the distance from the property line. So there wasn't even room for the retaining wall to go into place, I believe. So they ended up using like a steel retaining wall that rusted out and wasn't the safest thing either. So, you know, I'm, it's just a different impact on the neighbors is the fact that if they're constructing these retaining walls, it's affecting not only the drainage, but sometimes they're actually impact, having to go on the other neighbor's property just to get it on the property line.
If, if they do that, they technically should be getting a temporary easement from, construction easement from the neighbor. It's really no different than if I'm doing a roadway project that I need to have, go onto private properties, I have to acquire either a permanent easement or a temporary construction easement to do it. And in most cases.
I think the issue there was, there was damage done to the neighboring property that then the builder didn't feel responsible to deal with, you know, as they went forward.
Yeah, and you'll always have those common lot line issues, even after it's been constructed and people are living there. And that's typically between the property owners is, is how those are typically handled. What we've found is that if cities start getting involved with common lot line disputes, it's, it's really a downward spiral, where you never really can get out of it from, from a city perspective.
I guess my point is that this was, this happened before we came up with the, some of our requirements as far as not raising the grade, too. So it was a, it wasn't an existing condition that necessitated the retaining wall. It was so the builder could maximize the lot and the height of the building and all of that, too. So I think it's just another example of fallout that we end, we don't foresee, but sometimes occurs because of our ordinances.
One tool that we are working on in regard to notification is this, and you may have heard of it, is the construction management plan that we're going to be requiring soon. Wayne and I and staff have been working on it for quite some time now. We're going to require to have that, a sign posted on these construction sites with that construction management plan attached, where, so a neighbor could go over and see what's required in terms of maintenance, that kind of thing. But maybe we have a provision in there that talks about plans on file, you know, grading plan on file at City Hall where they can come in and take a look.
Give them an opportunity, because I mean, a lot of people just don't understand the whole process and aren't going to necessarily, they don't know what that means.
You know, that, not a lot of people are architects or engineers that are just used to doing that, so.
Right.
Say, back to the, the issue of, you know, building up a retaining wall and creating a new lot that's significantly higher than its neighbor. You're saying that you make a judgment about whether that, I mean, it seems like, when I think about water runoff, that's going to cause water to run on the neighbor's lot, the lower lot.
It can and can't. I mean, it depends on how it's graded at the top of the wall and where you're redirecting the water to.
So.
So, so each, each, each lot would be a little bit different as far as if you put a retaining wall in and where the, where the drainage is, those. It's kind of hard to, I was looking to see if we, I didn't, I have a bunch of examples, but I don't have any with retaining walls on them.
Yeah, I mean, I'm picturing five feet between a house wall and a steep drop-off to the neighbor, where, you know, where else is water going to go on a significant rain event, except to the lowest point, to that neighbor's lot?
And if they take that five feet and drain it towards the front or the back of the lot, at the top of the retaining wall, that, that portion of, of the surface would drain to the, to the back or the, or the side. You typically wouldn't want to have surface water running over your retaining wall, just from an erosion point of view and, and deterioration of the retaining wall itself.
And I guess that's, you know, what, what's, what's underlying my question is how, how carefully does the city look at that and really look at, you know, soil composition and waterways, things like that?
Well, for instance, on this, this survey that we have in front of us is that, if you follow my, the arrow here, this is the existing topography of that contour, that elevation. And when they were building this, this, this home, they actually redeveloped a swell on this person's property here that would take this side yard and bring it around, round to this, this side, to the right side of that, at home. So that'd be the same thing that, what we look at on a, on a retaining wall is, if they had a retaining wall on this side, is that we'd look at where that would, would be draining to. And keep in mind that these are, the scale of these aren't very large and the details aren't there as far as when they actually, you know, go out and install them. So we're, we're looking at, at line, line drawings like what we, what you have in front of you here.
And you're relying on the surveyor or the civil engineer, relying on them and their licenser to give you good information?
Yep, yep. These are all signed by a licensed surveyor, so they, so they, so they, they need to be giving us that, that, that good information, especially for existing elevations and proposed elevations of, of the actual home itself.
I think that's a good point, because a lot of retaining walls are constructed so that they drain out the exposed surface of the wall in some way, whether it's through PVC piping or, or just the water can seep through. So it's not just runoff water, surface runoff, it's percolated water from that lot that's generated both by the maybe increased roof area and the fact that the wall is there, that it's going to, maybe even grants more opportunity for water to, to then, you know, percolated water to then transfer on to the neighboring property. I'm, again, I'm not the engineer here, but it, it just seems like there's a lot of impacts that we aren't necessarily considering. I mean, you might be able to take care of that with a French drain or something, but it's, I don't see us requiring that, I guess. I don't know if we ever do, but.
What, what, for instance, if you, if you did have a retaining wall that came off the corner of this house, behind the retaining wall, you'd have a drain tile so that the wall wouldn't, wouldn't collapse. That's just the technique, construction technique. That, that drain tile would, would more than likely would have drained towards the, the east, if north is straight up here, it would have drained towards the east and got into that drainage swell itself.
So that would be required of them by the city?
Right. During the construction of it, the building department inspectors would look, take a look at that to make sure it's, you're not directing in a new wave the runoff So I really had, so.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Well, I made it through.
Finally, avoiding.
No, you pretty much recovered everything else I had on the other slide, so that were in, were in my memo, so.
Good. Any other questions of our engineer? Wayne, thank you very much. So one thought with respect to this, we did discuss, Carrie, was to take a look at this proposed ordinance and see what would happen if we measured along the actual grade to before, before torn-down grade and see what that, what that would do. And I just have a feeling that, you know, you could handle it through the variance process if there was, if there was a lot that really tailed off at the back and was otherwise not buildable, they would qualify or could qualify for a variance, perhaps because it's not a self-imposed thing, and maybe we can handle it that way.
Thoughts? You'd certainly have the, I mean, severe topography is one of the classic kind of unique circumstances that we rely on in variances. So if you had a very steep grade on a lot, I could see where that would be a, you could justify a variance in that circumstance.
Additional scrutiny to see what's going on, I mean.
Yeah, and that, that also would, would not encourage those retaining walls that we're seeing. I think that this, this side setback requirement is encouraging people to put those retaining walls in.
Well, I have to say, this is news to me. I thought when we went through the whole business about the one foot above existing finished floor, I thought that was average for the whole perimeter of the building. And so to learn that it's just the average of the front and we're not paying any attention to the whole perimeter, I mean, I get you can have walkouts that are on a steep grade and, you know, the average might change, but it just, you know, that's exactly what, we were trying to avoid this kind of grade manipulation. That's exactly what we set out to do with that, so.
And if we use the variance process, that's a way to engage the neighbors as well.
Yeah, because owners would have to go out.
My concern is we use, when we use the variance process, which I think is appropriate here, that it's, you know, builders aren't trying to justify, but I can't build the house I want to build, I can't build this two-story house if we, you know, unless I have a variance versus this is the lot you have, it is buildable, you can, you know, it's not, you're fully aware of its challenges coming into it. And it just, it seems like we hear that occasionally from builders, but I can't do what I want to do, even though there's something else I could do. And it just, I just don't want it to become an easy way out of the situation of complying with it.
They found the easy way out right now, though.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
So that may address some of our issue with the, with the retaining wall. And what we're talking about wouldn't address that issue on Morningside. Is there anything else that you want to consider about access from front to back?
Well, what if you put us, I mean, I'd want to think through the consequences of this, but what if you created a setback for retaining walls? I mean, people are really just, I mean, they're trying to square off and flatten out as though their lot is two-dimensional, even when it has a grade to it, in order to get a square block to build off of.
Why can't they put steps in? I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Sorry.
What would you make them, again, the consequence, I don't know, but that if they want to access their backside, they'd have a, have to have a access easement or some cross-easement with their neighbor to access their backyard if they're intending on walking down their driveway to get, or the neighbor's driveway to get to their backyard.
But why not, why not just have a requirement that, consistent with, with the setbacks and with everything else, there must be at least a three-foot wide pathway.
An applicable path.
On the lot from the front yard to the backyard.
I think that makes perfect sense, because then you would deal with the egress window question. If you haven't got still three feet after the egress window, then you've not met that part of the code. It would deal with the walls that people are building. You know, if that takes up too much of that space, then obviously you can't build them right on the lot line, and you can't build the house as close. I mean, I kind of like that idea, I do.
Get the push mower back on it, right?
And you can, I mean, why can't they, in a lot of these situations, put steps in, you know, with their retaining wall, at least on one side, so they, they do have access to get their mower back there? It seems like, I, I think that's a very reasonable solution.
I know some, some cities also have a five foot on one side, nine feet on the other side, side yard setbacks, that they're not just both five on either side.
What's the reason for that?
Well, I suspect it may be to ensure that you've got at least a way to pass on one side.
It's something as simple as, I have one neighbor that has very little easement, and I always let them use my yard. But it's, it's everything from, I want to take out a tree, and now someone has to come and get equipment back there to take out my dead tree. It's not only the, the lawnmower, but it's any kind of special maintenance you want to do on outbuildings or things in the back of your yard. Wider equipment has to go through than just your lawnmower. And it always has to go over somebody else's yard.
I just have a question about whether we tie this to a definition of an accessible, an accessible route, which might have its own effects, versus having a three-foot setback before, you know, a retaining wall or egress window or some constructed element. And I'm not sure how to word it. I, I'm concerned that accessible route might challenge us, because we'd have to define that.
It becomes a difficult thing to enforce, as we don't require permits for retaining walls. You know, how are we, we're creating a lot of non-conforming situations out there. And then how do people know that they have to have a three-foot route? You know, it's easy for the new home to require that, but.
If we don't require permits for retaining walls, how do we know if they're the type that need a structural engineer? If it's not a tear-down or a new build? We don't.
We don't. I mean, generally, the, the people who are constructing these retaining walls, unless it's someone doing it on their own, but a, you know, landscape company, they're going to know that if. but a, you know, landscape company, they're going to know that if it's taller than four feet, they're going to need a building permit. That's a state code.
Okay.
But wouldn't that, wouldn't that come up, you know, when they do the grading review? I mean, couldn't it just be tacked on if there's an accessible walkway or path to the backyard? I mean, to me, that's part of the grading. At the end of the day, it's really part of the grading because how are they fitting in there at that point? So, they're going to have to plan ahead anyway on that side.
Not a problem with the new homes or a big construction project. It's those little.
New homes, I, you know, everything to date is, I'm not sure of a solution on that, but.
For time, I could come back with, we could take a look at some kind of language that talks about this access and we can look at consequences and discuss it again next time.
Okay. The next one is subdivisions in the R1 district.
Yeah, this one, the planning commission directed staff to put together an ordinance amendment that would allow, the PUD is the tool that would subdivide lots in areas that are less than 9,000 square feet in area, 75 feet in width, or the 120 feet in depth. That ordinance is before you. The council has expressed interest in the planning commission's original notion of the median being the requirement for lots smaller than 9,000 square feet. That would be, so that would be the citywide requirement in large lot areas and small lot areas. So, that's included in the ordinance. It seemed though the consensus of the planning commission, last time we talked about this, was that the PUD was the tool that gave the city the most discretion in review of a subdivision to ensure that that subdivision better fit the neighborhood. That median doesn't always fit the immediate block, so it might not be the best way to do that. So, I guess again, we're just asking for your consideration on that. Again, do we want to take out that median suggestion in the ordinance or leave them both in as tools to consider? And then this would be, we're kind of teeing this up, I think, for our work session discussion that we have with the council in September. So, I just ask that we have a little more discussion on that.
Go ahead, Mr. Platter.
Just have a comment. I was looking at this. Last time, it seemed like a PUD was a good thing, which maybe it still is. But I looked at it a little bit more. It doesn't really give any guidelines to what the city might accept. Or, I don't know if that's a part of this. I mean, I know it's simplistic, but when you did have the 500 feet, you had a guideline or you could very easily do that with a PUD. And one of my concerns, are we just going to get some crazy stuff in with that? I don't know. I'm just throwing that out for discussion. It was another thought I had on it, so.
It's a possibility. It gives you, you know, a lot more authority to say yes or no. The requirement is 9,000 square feet, 75 feet in width, 120 feet in depth. To vary from that, you need a PUD. So, that gives the city complete discretion to say yes or no. If someone comes in with some crazy scheme, you can say no. With the median, if someone meets that medians, you can't say no. It might not fit that immediate block, but if it meets the medians, we can't say no.
What I'm, I guess, part of what I'm asking is, so you're leaving it wide open with the PUD. And again, that's probably a good thing, but you're not giving anybody any guidelines or some neighbor to understand what it could happen there. Because you say PUD, well, in theory, anything, I mean, it wouldn't, but anything could happen.
That's true.
I don't.
But you're constrained somewhat.
I guess by R1, right?
Well, it's R1, but you're constrained somewhat by the language in the comprehensive plan. Believe it or not, I'm actually citing the comprehensive plan here tonight, which provides, you know, protect and preserve the essential character of existing residential neighborhoods. And the PUD gives us a real opportunity to really focus on what is going on in the neighborhood and also to encourage infill development. And, I don't know, I just think that that kind of flexibility would be a good thing so that we could really have some input to what's going on on those lots. Commissioner Carpenter?
My reaction to that, number one, I looked at the PUD and I thought, well, that might be a nice way to to deal with this stuff on a very incremental basis. But I suspect then we're going to have just a ton of PUDs. And I start to wonder whether or not it makes sense to have something like that where we're going to have to be considering. What's that?
Is that what we want every time?
Yeah, I don't know. That's, that is what we want. I would think that there may be some value to doing, going the direction the city council's leaning because it would at least serve as a kind of a regulator or governor for how many different applications might come in. I'm not sure that it's a persuasive thing to argue that, but I just, I kind of have this feeling that it might become overwhelming.
Mr. Potts?
If we look at that 500-foot tool, if we shrink that, does that make the median any better of a tool? And is that based on something consistent with other things?
Where that 500-foot came in? Yeah, I'm not sure what the rationale was behind that, but we certainly could consider a shorter distance.
When we issue a notification of variance, isn't that a 300-foot?
Yeah, it's just more the adjacent properties. It's the conditional use permits, rezoning, that's 1,000 feet.
No, no, I don't think you want to increase it, but if it were smaller, perhaps. Commissioner Forrest?
I'm also concerned about our definition of the 500-foot neighborhood because like the situation that was before us last month, you can have a street that backs up to on another street with very large lots and then the next street over may have very small lots. And they each have their own neighborhood character. And to start imposing the numbers of one on the other may be really inappropriate as far as preserving that neighborhood character. Or it could skew, it could skew lot sizes even downward or upward depending on what was done with subdividing and such. I'm also concerned about using the PUD. When we first talked about this, I didn't care one way or the other whether or not PUDs were applicable in R1 areas. But now thinking about some of the possible consequences, as Commissioner Platter said, I am concerned about it because it, with R1, there is a certain amount of expectation that residents have that things will only change so much. And if it's not in writing somewhere as far as how, what they can do, as far as relying on the comp plan, that was my first thought as well that it's, you know, at least we have that. But then we just turn around and flip the comp plan and say, oh, we'll just amend the comp plan now to comply with what we want to do. So, it just seems, I think we need to move with caution with this kind of approach if we decide to do it. Because, you know, I mean, and just put ourselves in the situation of a neighbor that may want to know, you know, what's the potential of something going in there. All of a sudden, there's a six-story R1 home next door because it's a 40-foot lot. I mean, there's a lot of potential.
But the practical issue is, is every neighbor doesn't want anything to change in their neighborhood. No, that's, every neighbor does not want anything to change in their neighborhood because they moved in there 50 years ago and they want it to be exactly the way it's always been. And that's what ties us up in knots when people come before variances. And we are charged with planning and development of the city of Edina and not worrying about some neighbor's grudge against a developer or against their neighbor across the street. And I'm sensitive to the argument that people have expectations about what's going to happen in their neighborhoods. But by the same token, you've got to be sensitive to the fact that we need to redevelop this city.
I think there's a lot, I mean, there is that situation at times, but I don't think it's necessarily the rule. I think that people are pretty open to changes that are reasonable, gradual shifts in the character of a neighborhood, those kinds of things. It's the, when you have a tear down and it's all story and a half or one-story homes and all of a sudden, there's the equivalent of a three-story house next door, it's a little jarring. And I can see if the lots are smaller in that neighborhood especially, that that could be disturbing to somebody, especially with their sunlight, their privacy and everything else is affected. Yeah, I think there's aversion to change a lot of times, but I don't think that's always the rule when it comes to, you know, people like to see improvements in their neighborhood too. They like to see things done tastefully. Well, you've even mentioned the fact, well, then their property values can go up. Unfortunately though, there's evidence out there, and I don't have the data with me, that in neighborhoods where smaller homes are torn down and significantly larger ones are put up, the value of the existing homes goes down, not up. So, it's, you know, it's, I think we just need to move with caution as far as using the PUD in the situation. I'm not saying it's necessarily always bad, but I think we shouldn't also use it as an excuse. We, yeah, we're charged with, you know, planning and development of the city and we like infill because that's all we have pretty much now. On the other hand, we're also charged with preserving the character of the neighborhoods. So, it's, you know, it is a balancing act.
And it seems to me, I don't want to debate it, but it seems to me that if you look at the language in the plan, that is exactly what we're responsible for, is preserving the essential character. And the PUD gives us the most opportunity, I think, to do that.
That's the other side of it, yep.
I mean, you take the example of the house on Brookview that Andy Porter wanted to subdivide the lot. Well, you can't do that because, you know, it's always been a 100-foot lot and you can't do it. And we love the oak trees and all that kind of stuff. Well, his only option is to tear that house down and build a big house on that lot because that's the only thing that's economically feasible. A PUD would have given us the opportunity to say, okay, fine, put two 50-foot lots in there, but these are the size houses you can put on there. And it's got to be consistent. Maybe you can only build a story and a half. You can't build a two-story. And you do reasonable and appropriate infill development via the PUD as opposed to leaving it open to a massive home on a 100-foot lot.
And that's exactly what I think has concerned me too, is that when we look at these smaller lots, the code says no. And yet, it's not necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily be inappropriate. And neighbors had even said they wouldn't object to reasonably sized houses on smaller lots. And if we're making the decision that this is what we want to do as a rule versus an exception is to be able to subdivide these lots, I think maybe we should decide how small they can be. In other words, do we want the equivalent of very close townhomes on 30-foot lots? Or do we want to make a minimum of 50-foot lots? And if we do want to impose any restrictions on lots that are less than 75 feet that are in addition to our current setback restrictions so that we aren't granting, you know, because of smaller lots, you can build more of your lot coverage too. You know, you can go 30% of your lot coverage and, and I'm, I'm sorry, I don't always get the balance right on that as far as, but you're allowed to do more, a higher percentage, I think, slightly. Is that correct?
On the smaller lots, correct. 30% then.
Got it right. But, so I think we need to, you know, what do we want? And then what can we do to achieve what we want for these neighborhoods?
Mr. Platter?
So, I have to comment to that and I think it's kind of a fairness question. So, I'll bring up this one again. It's a 50-foot lot. They could build two 5 feet from the property line. They could build a certain height. What right do we have in a PUD situation on another 50-foot lot to say you can build, only build a smaller house?
Well, if it's infill, I mean, right now, we're saying.
This is infill.
Yeah, I know. No, I mean, that's a different situation. I'm talking about the subdividing situation, which is different. And.
Why? I mean, there could be a 100-foot one right here, but this is still a 50.
Well, and it's new.
That's what they can do by code today.
Right, that's what I'm saying. But new construction, not remodels necessarily. I don't know how, like I said, I don't have all the answers on this one for sure.
I mean, this is brand new. It's a new house.
Exactly. But maybe that's where on the 50-foot lots, new construction is, you know, we put some restrictions on the size, maybe based upon what's in the neighborhood. I'm not sure exactly how we do it. I think other communities have done certain things. I don't know if there's a perfect answer, though.
There's never a perfect answer.
Commissioner Stotson?
Just looking at the draft that you put together, Carrie, it looks to me like the, there's some changes about minimum lot area, minimum lot width, minimum lot depth that refer back to section 810 of the code. But other than that, the only change is on that first and second page, which basically says, "In the case of a PUD in a low-density residential area, the structural design of the house must be compatible and complementary with surrounding housing." So, is that basically our only standard for a PUD in a residential district?
As it's drafted now, if we want to build in more language, we can sure do that. And with each individual case too, we can build in conditions at that time.
Well, and so I've been listening to this conversation back and forth about kind of reliance or predictability, but also being flexible and nimble. And, yeah, they are. And I get it. I mean, both are reasonable. And I'm, I have some sympathy to the fact that you, you know, you can't, the PUD is attractive because it's kind of the silver bullet. It always seems like we'll figure it out when we get to the case. Yeah, right. But nobody knows how we'll figure it out in advance unless you have some standards that give some guidance to people about what we're looking at. And this strikes me as a little skinny. I think we need to, if we're going to use a PUD, we need to have some objective criteria that we're going to apply to figure out, you know, what are these things that we like? Whatever, what do we, what do we think is, you know, using those examples on Brookview, the one that Andy Porter came in with was a good example, or the one on the other side of the same block. We had several in that whole neighborhood. And what was it that we thought was, you know, what are the circumstances where you think it's okay? Where it's going to enhance the neighborhood, not, not just permit somebody to squeeze two houses in where they don't belong or two big houses where they don't belong. So, I, my instinct is we need, I guess I'm, my mind is open about the PUD option, but I think we need a little more substance to the criteria.
Do you have any thoughts about what those criteria might be?
Well, I'm trying to remember back to the conversation we had when we kind of suggested staff look at this. And I remember Commissioner Schroder having some suggestions that were kind of along the lines that we've talked about on PUDs as we've been, as we've been trying out our PUD ordinance, we've kind of talked about, well, what's in it for the city? What are you, what are you doing to make things better? And so, I, you know, as I sit here, I don't know what those are, but I think that's what we have to be drilling into. In those examples, you know, I think the fear was that the houses were going to be too big or they were going to not be in character. And that is what we're saying here. But what does that mean? Does that, you know, is it setbacks? Is it, you know, what other amenities?
There's a couple of ways you could go about it. We could write those things right into the PUD. Another way City of Minnetonka did that with, where they were dealing with these subdivisions where they took a variance, they wrote in a policy how big the house could be. I think in that example, it was you could build to the size of the biggest house within, I think it was 200, 300 feet. That was the max that you could build to. So, and you can build in height requirements too. So, that's one way to do it. You could put it right into the PUD or you could by policy say, these are the things we're looking for. And then you could amend that policy from time to time as projects come in.
Commissioner Platter?
I was kind of thinking of the same lines, you know, how do you take from PUD, you can do this much to you can do this much somehow? I think that's what we're kind of saying, right? So, we're trying to narrow it up, yet leave, giving some opportunities, but we're also trying to say, well, it's going to be within, somewhere within here, although it could vary within that, right? I think that's kind of what we're saying. And then I had the same item too. I actually had some. And then I had the same item, too. I actually had some, a little bit of language, but we talked about the structural design must be compatible and complementary. And I, I was throwing out the height and look, and, you know, I don't know what, you could, you could build a lot of other things into there, too, to maybe bring those guidelines a little bit closer, or keep the road a little bit narrower, maybe?
And we don't want to be the design police. I mean, I think the big-
Yeah.
The big issue isn't so much, you know, the compatibility versus, you know, while you painted your house red.
Right.
It's the fact that, because that's changeable. It's the, it's the massing, the size, scale mass, which-
Massing height.
Commissioner Schroeder pointed out, isn't really clearly defined either, so.
That's right.
But there are regulations, I'm sure that, a couple of years ago, I was looking at this, there are regulations that other cities have that speak specifically to that issue, and maybe we should explore that and either use it with the PUD, or, you know, or otherwise, because it's, that's the thing that's really throwing people off.
Well, it seems to me that the people, you know, nobody in a, in a tear-down situation builds a smaller house than the one that they're tearing down, okay? They want to build a bigger house. And the issue, you know, and you see it along Halifax and other places in town, the issue is, all of a sudden, they tear it down, and you've got this monstrosity. But in order to make it economically feasible, most of the time, you have to build a bigger house. So one of the, one of the criteria is how much bigger can it be? And maybe you do something like what they did in Minnetonka, and you take the, it can't be any bigger than the largest house within 300 feet, or it can't be any bigger than 10% more than the largest house.
Yeah, I was almost thinking of percent more or something.
And you make it, gradually, that neighborhood or that street will redevelop and get larger, but it's not going to get larger all at one time. And, yeah, something like, and, you know, so that could be a criteria. You could, you could add, you could add a landscape criteria. You could add an access to the backyard criteria.
Retaining wall criteria.
You could add a retaining wall criteria. You could add a drainage requirement criteria. You could put all these in a policy. If you're going to ask for a PUD, these are the kinds of things that we're going to look at and expect, and the city has a right to expect these if you want to do this on this lot. So I, I don't know.
And what does the city get out of it?
And then that satisfies some of the concerns that the neighbors have, that we're just going to go hog-wob willy-nilly and build a, you know, a gas station on every neigh, on every block, or something like that.
You'd like them, but no one else would.
I would like that, but, you know.
Only if they had full service. But I think, I think that's really, I think that's an interesting way to go, because I know with the country club plan of treatment, they have the heights limited to 10% over some surrounding homes and stuff, so maybe we do it that way. I am a little concerned if we keep our neighborhood definition, though, because once again, you could have a street with very, you know, modestly sized homes and lots with very large homes right behind them and well within their neighborhood, and maybe even dominating the neighborhood as it's defined. So I think we might want to reevaluate that. The one thing I do like in this language, though, that kind of, is the fact that it's very inclusive. It talks about, in the case of a PUD in a low-density residential area, it should be compatible with the surrounding housing. It's not limited to R1. It's low-density residential, so it could be, you know, areas that have fourplexes or something like that. And I think it's kind of nice, because it's nice to be able to keep that integration of the neighborhoods when it's there as well. So it gives us something more there.
Carrie, what, what do you think, as we're talking about the neighborhoods, what do you think this current project to name the neighborhoods, what, what impact, if any, might that have on this? Does that provide a, will that provide sort of a definitional aspect to the thing, that this neighborhood is this kind of stuff, and that neighborhood is that kind of stuff? I don't know.
I don't think so. I think some of those neighborhoods are quite large. Thinking of countryside, for an example, that's quite a large area. Some neighborhoods are going to be smaller. So I'm not sure that we could tie that in with this. I think we want a little bit smaller radius here.
Neighborhood says they're going to be named, too, especially with the size changes. If you drive through them, there's a variety of housing within the ones that will be encompassed by those names, I believe.
Any other, any other discussion on this? On this, this give you some ideas to work with?
It does.
One more question.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Platter?
Just to clarify how this would work. Somebody comes in for a PUD, and they come out of it with an experience where they don't like the result they got. I assume then that they can go back in and, and develop without the PUD in conformity with the existing ordinance? Is that the contemplation? So they get two bites of the apple?
Well, to come in and ask for something, they have to, I think our language is, it has to be a substantial change to the plan. If they, well, I'm thinking if they had a plan that met code, they would probably go that route in the first place. Anyone that's coming in with a PUD-
If they had a, I'm sorry, if they had a plan that would, yeah, I agree with that. But if, for example, they, they thought maybe they could get something better, they'd come in first seeking a PUD and then seeing what comes out of it. They're not bound to, to accept that if they want to default back to the, you know, the original ordinance, are they?
No, no. Yeah, in that case, I think that would probably be a substantial change, and they could come back under the-
The reason I was asking that question, it goes back to the concern I have that I expressed earlier, which is that I, I see this as kind of opening the door to just a large number of applications, kind of on the basis that there's, where's the risk? There's no risk at all. We'll come in, ask for a PUD, see what we can get. It doesn't take a lot of effort. And if we do, we hit a home run. If we don't, then we still have the, the code to go through. I'm just, I'm not sure that I see, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe, maybe my expectations about, you know, a large number of homes coming through, you know, maybe that's unrealistic. I don't know what, you know, Minnetonka's got this. I'm not sure who else does. Be curious to know what their experience is in terms of frequency of PUD applications for residential.
I would also, I would also say, but how many, to that point, how many people would want to pull, pull PUD, come before a planning commission, submit it? I don't think they'd want to do that unless there's a huge benefit, like a lot division or something. I'm just thinking out loud. I mean, would, would, how many people would really want to get the city involved and all their neighbors involved in that either? So maybe, I don't know, maybe-
I can't answer that question.
And there is a substantial cost involved, the application, and the survey work. So it's going to cost in the thousands of dollars to, just to come before you.
And the survey work, I'm assuming, would be the biggest part of that?
It would.
And how much would it cost, then, to adjust the survey for, to, I mean, they've already done the survey work for the site. If they're going to go back and do it differently, would, would the survey costs be the same? I assume maybe it wouldn't be the same.
Yeah, I don't know how much that would cost to make changes.
Right.
A lot of your cost would be just the first cost of getting it surveyed the first time.
Right. So, I mean, you have to do that anyway.
You have the lot values and everything, so.
So I'm not sure why that would be an excess cost, then.
You'd have to do that to get, oh, I see what you're saying. Gotcha. Where you do a P or U, PUD or not.
Right.
You're going to have to get all that survey information, don't you?
My only question, I guess, is if, if nothing else, would be to, if there's a way we could, you could inquire to find out, let me back up. Is Minnetonka the only, only city in the area that we know of that does PUDs for residential? I can't remember what we found.
Oh, I think most, all cities do. I think that was the choice that we made to keep it out of the R1 district.
A large number. I'd be interested if there's a way you could do sort of an informal survey of just whatever you think would be appropriate, to get some idea as to what the frequency is that they're seeing in terms of PUD.
Yeah, in those, I think in most other cities, it's, they're doing a PUD in a low-density area in order to, they're not redeveloping, you know, small lots, a two-lot PUD. I don't think we're going to find any of those. It's more-
It's very limited.
A large area where we want to protect a large stand of trees, and we're going to make the lot sizes smaller. So I think we're going to be unique here in doing a PUD for a two-lot subdivision.
Other comments for Carrie? Commissioner Platter?
I still think we, I would like to explore looking at different setbacks, restrictions, or whatever, when new construction is built on a quote, "substandard" lot, just so that, and I'm not saying it would have to be highly restrictive, but sometimes it's just way out of scale for what's, you know, appropriate on these 40 and 50-foot lots. And that might affect our decisions regarding subdividing or builders' decisions as well. It's, it's a toughie.
That's why we get paid the big bucks.
You get paid?
We don't get paid, folks.
So would you like me to develop some, some of those criteria that you discussed in a policy form, or are you thinking, put in the code? All of this is going to be for discussion with the council.
Start with the policy.
Yeah, let's start with the policy.
Start with the policy.
Yeah, get them, at least get them on paper. And then the next item is building height, and your idea to reduce the ridge line requirement in order to grant some, some relief. So Carrie, go ahead.
Yeah, and we had a little discussion on this earlier with Wayne and the grading issue, but we've had a number of builders express concern to the city council, passed it on to me, that the desire to grant some exceptions if someone is going to build lower than the required ridge line of a house. Right now, the maximum ridge line is between 35 and 40 feet, depending on your lot width. So the thought here is, if someone built to a 30-foot ridge line, five feet lower than what would be normally allowed under, on a 50-foot lot, that they be granted an exception to build to the side yard setback for the second story. So in other words, if they squished the house down, lowered the house, they could come out on the sides, not on the ground, but on the second story. The, the required setback on the ground would stay the same at five feet. It's what they would be accepted from is that requirement to step the second story in six inches for every foot that that building is taller than 15 feet. So they're going lower, but they're able to expand out on the second level slightly more.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stotan?
So can you, can you tell us what the purpose is behind this second-floor setback rule? Where did this come from? What do you know about that?
I think it came from wanting to provide more separation between homes on either side, more airflow. I'm just guessing. I'm not really sure how that, how that came to be.
This makes sense to me.
And then the theory would be, this is, this is part of the discussion that, that we used to hear on the heritage preservation board, about the fact that it's now impossible to build some of the center hall colonials that have sort of a big front face, but a lower roof, on a country club lot, particularly the smaller ones, with the, with the current code.
Yep.
This would give some help to that.
It would, if they could stay to that 30-foot ridge line, that would help for that.
It would increase the space on the second floor, even though it might decrease some of the airspace between the adjacent homes.
Right.
Okay.
Mr. Potts?
Carrie, where did the 30-foot number come from? Is it tied to something specific, a roof slope, or ceiling height on second floor?
Oh, where did we come up with the 30 feet that would trigger the exception?
And I guess I should say, I support this idea generally, because I like that, being able to build straight up, like the, the historic district. And so I just want to make sure, if we're going to allow that, that we choose the appropriate height to lower it.
Yeah, we started out writing another formula, which I really didn't want to do, that we would give them, say if they built to 32 feet, they could get a slight reduction. But those formulas really become problematic for getting builders to understand what it is, what it means, staff just reviewing permits. It just really gets complicated. So we thought, what if we just threw out the formula, that if you built to a 30-foot ridge line, we don't even have to worry about that stepping in. And it seemed to be a number that worked for the builders. You know, it's really in Sunningham, they're lowering that five, five feet from what they could do, and then they get that relief on the side. So that's kind of how we came up with the 30 feet. It seemed to be a number that worked for generally what we're hearing from the builders.
Does Minneapolis impose 30 feet for some of these situations? It seems like I heard something, totally hearsay, a while ago.
I'm not sure if they have a regulation to the ridge line. If their 30-foot requirement, I think, is to the midpoint of a pitched roof.
Mr. Platter?
Yeah, I like how this is written. I think it actually would induce a lot of people not to just go to 35 feet, where they, it seems they all seem to, they all land. So, and again, I would almost say, I don't know if there's any discussion needed on the 35 and 40 overall, if that is in play or not, I don't know either. But at least this would give them the option to do that. And there's one in my neighborhood, looks, did something similar to this? I think it looks much better than some of the ones that all have to go to 35 feet, personally. More in the scale.
And right now, we're imposing, I mean, we're pretty much making them build these homes with large front gables that have very steep roofs, so that they meet that side yard setback. So we're, we're imposing a design that we aren't that, always that comfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. With, because it's, it looms over the street more.
Other comments? Other comments on this issue for Steph? Consistency seems to be that we like this.
Is this something that you'd like me to move on to the city council, then? Or do we want to have more discussion and consider it, or?
I don't know what else, I mean, what else could we?
Yeah, the only other thing I was suggesting was that, that ordinance, the handout that I put before you, but I don't think we want to go there at this point. That has more to do with the grading on the sides.
This was the gradings, yeah, yeah.
And you were going to flesh out some other options.
Right.
Right.
Yep. So this would be separate from that.
Okay.
Can I ask a-
Yes, you may.
As I look at every one of these, and, and when it's attached with, it's terrible for me to say, but, you know, builders have indicated they like this, I immediately start to think, and, and why do they like this? You know, what, in addition to things that make sense to me, like increased space, are they finding appealing? Can anyone think, what, is there, is there a downside to this?
Mr. Stotan?
I mean, you know, if you look at the pictures, you can see that you can, you know, if you, if you just make the pitch of the roof more shallow, you're going to, I mean, like in that first picture, there's not much space at the, in the last five feet because the pitch of the roof is so steep. If that pitch flattens out, then you're going to have a, you know, you'll have a 30-foot tall, two-story home going all the way to within five feet of the property line. So the downside is, you know, you can have bedroom windows that are 10 feet apart from one another.
I mean, now we have people looking out their bedroom windows into other people's dining rooms because houses are- dining rooms, because houses are, no, literally, they are.
Because the floors are off.
Well, the floors are off, or because we build things bigger with higher ceilings now, and the windows are bigger on the newer homes than they are on the older homes. So, yeah, it's.
I mean, you were asking what's the downside? I mean, I think that's, if somebody's going to object on a 40-foot lot, you know, right now, you've got that kind of at a lower level. But so typically, if you go second story, and you've got to go how far, six inches in for every foot you go up? So if you were to get to 30 feet, you'd have to go 15 feet in? No, you'd have to go seven feet, seven and a half feet in. So you'd be 12 and a half. So the second stories would be 25 feet apart from one another, as opposed to 10 feet, really is what we're proposing.
Can't think of anything else.
Well, if we had a really long, I mean, if the builder's building a really long house, and, you know, they've got, then, these full two-story walls on both sides of those, you're imposing in the side yards a lot of the neighbors as well.
And light reduction and things like that.
Yeah, just, oh, because, and because of the proximity, like you've mentioned. I, on the other hand, I like the simplicity, and I like the fact that it allows us to have other styles of homes than, you know, steep roof cottages that are, where the second story looms over the street more, and some of these smaller lots. So it gives a little more flexibility in design as well.
Isn't the lot coverage in FBR going to, you know, that's going to keep it, it's not going to, it might be a box here, but it's not going to allow them necessarily to build more, right?
Because what is the lot coverage in there, one?
For a lot that's under 9,000 square feet, it's 30%.
30%.
For a lot that's over 9,000 square feet, it's 25%.
And lot coverage does not, does or does not include driveway sidewalks?
Does not.
Does not. So it's just structures?
Correct.
Not decks, not patios, not?
Does include patios.
It does.
Mm-hmm. There's an exception there, there's 80 feet of, square feet of patio that's accepted.
So for the most part, it is the structure. So the garage and the house are included within that lot coverage.
Kerry, you're talking about the footprint.
The footprint.
Right, not the capables square feet.
It includes patios, but not decks?
The 30% includes patio.
I'd have to dig out the code. There is, there is some exceptions there. I don't deal with that on a daily basis, so I'm not sure.
Well, and that's true, since we don't, regardless of whether it does or doesn't, since we don't need permits to put in a patio, if it's not new construction, who would know what kind of coverage we've created with patios all over the city?
Unless you live next to Commissioner Platter.
I'm sure I can explain something. I'd have my teeth out of the dais. You know, there with your measuring tape.
Any other discussion on this topic? Moving to the next item, the discussion of 2013 work plan.
Do we need, I'm sorry, do we need, are we approving this to go on, or are we?
That's a good question. What are we doing with this?
Are we approving this to go on?
Is there any reason to add it to our agenda for the discussion for the planning session, or should we act sooner?
Well, what's your pleasure?
What's the, what's the public hearing requirement? Do they do that at the city council?
Right.
So we don't have to have a public hearing before we can?
I don't think there's any rush on this.
There's not standing over you?
Yes, Jackie handed me the note, she deals with this on a daily basis, with people coming in. Decks and patios get 150 square foot of credit.
Beyond the 30%.
Beyond the, right.
Okay. So is it, is it your, is anybody's wish to make a motion to move this on to the council, or shall we wait until the next time?
I'd be interested in letting it percolate for one more meeting, and maybe our two commissioners who aren't here might have some thoughts on it, too.
And it could always be added to that discussion meeting that we have planned with the council.
Right. I'd say maybe it just should wait till there, because there's so many of these things.
They're in a lot.
Otherwise, you're piecemealing it, so.
Okay, and say we're going to wait. Thank you. Work plan. I think we've reached that point in the agenda.
Go for it.
The council has requested that each edine board and commission develop a work plan. So that's what is before you, is to consider a work plan for the year 2013. The purpose of this is to make sure that the council, that the priorities between the commissions and councils are all aligned, and that we have the resources to support what it is that commissions want to do. So what I've done is attach kind of the beginnings of a draft of the 2013 work plan, and all I've done is just include the typical things that we work on, how we respond to land use applications on a, two times a month basis, and then our ongoing zoning ordinance work. And I've kind of condensed down our process tracker and attached that. I've removed some of the things that we've already worked on. So the intent here is, this is just the beginnings of a work plan for 2013. So we could have some discussion tonight, but give it some thought if there's anything that we want to add here that you'd like to accomplish in 2013. And we'll also have a little bit of a discussion with the council at our work session in September, in terms of what it is they're looking for, and what you'd like to accomplish for 2013.
Commissioner Scher.
Just a clarification on the process tracker. Those items that do not have a date introduced, they seem to be different types. Some we've talked about and actually taken action, others we haven't really talked about. So help me with those.
Yeah, the ones without dates we haven't introduced, we haven't talked about, they're in the bucket list. I think we've talked about it, it's just adding them to the list, ones that we'd like to get to.
Should we add dates for the 2013 plan, to any of them, or?
We certainly could. Some of the bigger ones, we probably want to tackle.
Yeah, some of them seem to me like we should.
The parking regulations, the landscape regulations. That would be a good idea.
I would recommend that we pick a few and commit.
Mr. Staunton?
I would agree with, I mean, I think what this exercise is, is a priority setting exercise, is trying to figure out what are the most important things, and this is a good list to start from. I would add to it, obviously, the, whatever the next steps are going to be on the Grandview project. I know, and Kerry maybe can shed some light on this, my understanding is that the city is in the process of hiring an economic development director, and I suspect that that person will probably take some staff leadership role on that whole redevelopment effort. But I had a chance, just last night, actually, to make a presentation to the park board, and I made a presentation earlier in the spring to the transportation commission. And, you know, there's parts of the plan that touch planning, that touch park, that touch transportation, energy, and environment. So I suspect there's going to be a lot of work for the commissions to do, and perhaps for some of the folks who participated in the steering committee or the community advisory team. So I think we have to think through that as a part of this, because I would think 2013 would be a big part of moving forward on that. And I think by putting it on the plan, we can take some leadership in terms of pushing that ahead. I think the folks who worked on that want to make sure it doesn't just go on the shelf and not move forward.
I could give a little update as to where we're at there. I sat in on the interviews, for the three candidates, that it's been narrowed down to excellent, excellent. Whoever is selected out of the three, I'm not sure who it's going to be yet, but any one of the three would do a fantastic job for the city. So we're getting close. I think they'll decide in the next week or two here. The one thing that we are working on, there's some monies available for tearing down old buildings. And so we're in the process of applying for a grant to remove the public works building from the site. So we're going to be asking the council next week if that's something that they want us to pursue, if we want to tear the building down. But I think that's an excellent idea, that we should talk about what we want to add for the work plan, what steps we want to follow. I was thinking for our next planning commission meeting, we just have one variance on the agenda. What we might want to do is have our regular meeting, and then maybe adjourn into a work session, and we can talk about the work plan in much more detail, and things we want to go through, and we can talk about some of these ordinance things we've been working on also.
Mr. Platter?
Yeah, one thing I was going to recommend was like that, but then also, I think we as a group should prioritize you somehow. In other words, you know, vote, or whatever we want to do, to say, you know, which are the top five we want to go after, and, because there's a lot on here, but, you know, is rooftop dining, well, that's, I guess, done, but, you know, there's some other ones, is that really a priority? I mean, it seems there's some pretty good low hanging fruit here that we should get at, you know. To me, one is always parking regulations and proof of parking. I just think we're overparked overall, and our lighting requirements are old and antiquated as well. So those things, you know, from an energy and sustainability standpoint, maybe those are some that we go after. That's just some of the ones that perks my interest, but, you know, whatever the group decides.
Maybe prior to that discussion, each of us could just kind of go through the list and maybe categorize, prioritize their top five. Interesting to put that up on the board and just see how, see how they align.
Are there priorities, Kerry, that separate apart from what we might individually think? That from a planning perspective, you think there's some that are more important to address early as opposed to later?
From the ordinance list here?
Right.
Also, is the council giving any direction?
Yeah, that'd be a good question, too.
Yeah, and that could be something that we talk about, too, at the study session with them. But yeah, there are certainly items that are more important on this list, that I think we should get to.
Maybe as part of this idea of soliciting input, you know, you can take a first crack at putting what you think the priorities are.
Mr. Potts?
Kerry, one other question for you, back to our stormwater and impervious surface discussion with Mr. Hool. I think you mentioned Energy and Environment was working on some new, or maybe he did, some stormwater runoff policies of some kind. Could you tell us a little more about that?
Yeah, I don't know a lot about that, but they do have a new staff person, that that's kind of their main charge. And so I'm guessing that's probably what they're working on.
So I guess I'm wondering if that's an area where we could collaborate between commissions relative to the retaining wall, site drainage, lot coverage sort of issue.
Commissioner Scher?
Kerry, remind me, as I look at the topic list that's here, and I know we could certainly amend it or add to it, but how do we get these topics?
Yeah, it's as we've been going through these zoning ordinance amendments, and remember, we had the work sessions every other month. If people had an idea, we just added it to the list.
Okay.
Whether it was from people in the public, or it was a commissioner, or staff, that's really how it's evolved.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Forrest?
Well, and you mentioned collaboration. I think, too, it would be interesting to see if there's any particular take that the transportation commission has regarding the parking, the pedestrian connectivity, and all of that, so that our goals are in line with theirs.
I think transportation, probably, energy, environmental.
Environmental will have thoughts, for sure.
And, I don't know, parks, or something, you know, how these all eventually come together. Because that's the point of doing the work plan for each group, right? Then you can see what else other people are doing.
Other thoughts and comments? Okay, we will move that ahead to the discussion to come. Moving on the agenda, correspondence and petitions, council connection, you received that. You received the attendance report. I note that your chair is now at 75%.
Good for another month.
Good for another month. We received the city council meetings. And all kidding aside, I do want to call out Commissioners Platter and Forrest for 100% participation so far, so that's.
We're going to stick her.
Well, you get an atta boy, how about that?
Gold star.
Gold star.
At a girl.
At a girl, atta boy. Chair and commission member comments. I have one, I guess, as we were going through here, as I was thinking about, Kerry, just as a matter of interest, what's going on with, you know, some of the things that we've, that have been before the commission recently? What's happening with the waters development, for example? Is that moving forward or not? What's going on with anything further on the Southdale sketch plan that we heard a couple weeks ago? Byerly's issue, that type of thing? Just kind of what's going on with some of the things that have come before the commission?
Certainly, waters is, they are coming up, believe it or not, it was two years ago, July 20th, when that project was approved by the city council. So we have two years to pull a building permit and start site grading, or those approvals expire. So they're very close to getting, obtaining a building permit. The plans are in, they're being reviewed.
There's another way.
So they're cutting it close, but the idea is, they are still hoping to have a permit issued before July 20th.
Interesting.
We're very close, so you might see some. We have two years from the date of approval to issue a permit, or it becomes, or it expires, right. Park dedication fee, they need to pay before that building permit is issued. So that's, they're well aware of that, and they're prepared to do that, so that's moving forward. The Byerlys, I met with them just this morning. I haven't seen any plan yet. They say they've got a housing developer on board, so they're working hard now to develop the plans based on planning commission and council comments. So you may see those before the, before the first of the year, anyway, likely this fall.
Do they ever get the lot behind them?
No.
Okay.
No, it's unfortunate, but no. Not through lack of trying.
Another orphan law.
Yeah. There you go, Kevin.
An update on the Southdale plan. They have, we've authorized WSB to go ahead and start the traffic study and the parking study. So they began that Monday this week, so they're still working on developing those plans. And they're hoping that the same time the traffic and parking study is done, they'll be ready to submit an application. So that'll likely be before you, within the next couple of months, anyway.
Did the medical building go to council yet?
Not yet. The council did not meet on July 3rd, so that will go to them next Tuesday.
Other commission member comments?
Just, I noticed, continuing in the same vein, and I don't know if you all drive in that area, but the, I'm missing the cross street, 70th?
70th and France?
70th and France, construction inner, just on the former gas station site.
Oh, yeah, that's moving right along.
Demolished.
Oh, they got structure up.
Oh, is the structure up?
Yeah, it's framed, yeah.
I guess the last update is on the France Avenue crossings, you know, that the transportation commission has been working on, and a few commissioners attended the last stakeholders' meeting. Some of the estimates that came in for some of the desired form that that's going to take is many times over the budget.
Really?
Yeah. So more to come on that. So, more to come on that. It'll go before the transportation commission, I believe, next week. But many revisions are going to have to be made to that. So, that's moving forward, anyway.
Other commission member comments? Other staff comments? Very well. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved. Your second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.